I'm going to call this meeting of the Watertown Free Board of Library Trustees to order. It's seven o'clock, April 7. We're happy to see everyone here tonight. Glad everyone's healthy and able to make it. I just wanted to thank you for figuring out a new format for our meetings and I'll start by just doing a roll call. And tonight, we're just gonna, I'll call each name and you just reply here. And, and we'll do it that way. So, Library Director Leon Cole.
Here.
Assistant Director Caitlin Brown.
Here.
Trustee Shepherd Ferguson.
Here.
All right. Trustee Michael Handlin.
Yeah.
Trustee Daniel Pritchett.
Here.
Trustee Teddy Kokoros. And Trustee Emily Izzo.
Here.
And this is Leanne Hammonds, and I am present as well. So, we are all here. Thank you. And just as a preliminary matter, this this is an open meeting of the Watertown Board of Library Trustees, and it's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth because of the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. So, we're allowed and encouraged to participate remotely in our meetings, which is what we're doing tonight. The order, which you can find posted with our agenda materials, it's right at the top of the agenda, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not necessarily ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting, as usual, we will have an opportunity for the public to speak during the public forum portion of the agenda. If anyone so chooses, I don't see that anyone, any members of the public have called in. So, we'll see if any do at the time of the public forum. For this meeting, the board is convening via Zoom, obviously, and the directions were posted on the agenda for any members of the public that wanted to attend. So, and just note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference or all attendees. Just be aware that people can see you and take care not to screen share your computer. The, the way I think that we should go about holding this meeting, we just need to be clear about who's talking so that the minutes can be easier to, to, to write. So, as such, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda, and after they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each of you to, to comment with questions or motions. So, I guess just please hold any comments until, until the speaker has finished. And I've asked if you have a comment, just because on these meetings, I understand that sometimes it gets one person tries to jump in and then another, and it becomes very hard to follow along. So, just remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking, and try to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. I'm sure Teddy will thank you for that.
Pretty much.
For, so, for any response, just please wait until I've called on you. And then, if you want to just talk amongst yourselves, you know, we can, we can go into that. But maybe just, you know, raise your hand and say, "I'd like to comment on that." And then, each vote will take at this meeting will be a by-roll call vote, so if we need to vote at all. That's it for just the meeting, how we'll run it. So, I guess what we can do, before we get to the secretary's report, I'd just like to say that this has been a really trying month for everyone, everywhere. And I just want to thank Leon and Caitlin for steering the library so well through this stressful month. And, and I want to thank the entire library staff for all of the work they're doing, because we're seeing a lot of what, what's been going on, you know, on social media and things about what's happening at the library. I think you've done a great job. So, thank you, and thank you to all of the staff.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Okay. So, I guess we'll get to, unless anybody else would like to say anything at this point. Okay. Let's start with the secretary's report. We have our minutes from the last meeting. And what I'd like to do is just, if you have a any comments on the meeting minutes from last time, I'll just go around and ask, starting with Leon, did you have any comments or corrections?
I think there were just a couple of times when my first name was inserted instead of my last name. So, Teddy, you might want to check on that. That's all.
Yeah.
Caitlin?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. And Mike, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Emily?
No.
Shep?
No.
And Daniel?
I didn't see any.
Okay. I just had one comment just on the chairwoman's report. I prefer chair, just.
Okay.
Sure. And then, there was one under new business. It's the first bullet. I think you just mean possibly.
Okay.
So, that's the second page under new business.
Thank you for that.
Okay. And that was all I saw. So, do we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Make a motion to accept. Mike Handlin.
Second, Shep Ferguson.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Leanne, sorry to jump in. A roll call vote?
Yes, let's do a roll call vote. Okay, so, I'm gonna, oh, Mike has stepped away. I'll start with Shep. Shepherd Ferguson?
Yes.
Daniel Pritchett?
Yes.
Mike Handlin?
Yes.
Emily Izzo?
Yes.
Teddy Kokoros?
Yes.
And I, yes, for me as well. So, the ayes have it. Thank you. Now, is moving on to public forum, I don't see any members of the public present. Are there any members of the public that I'm not seeing? Okay. So, we'll move along to, the next item is the Red Leaf Cafe update. Don has not called in, so is there anything to update Leon that you know of?
No, I know that Donald has cleared out food-wise, but we really haven't heard too much from him. I've been trying to send him some, you know, information about help for small businesses, and hopefully he can take advantage of something like that, so.
So. All right. Did anybody have any questions so far? Comments? All right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
To, and did, um, your questions to him about noise in the cafe and so forth, have you been getting any positive responses to that?
He's kind of reluctant to, to really be a kind of disciplinarian. So, we're, you know, Caitlin and I keep talk, talking with him, trying to figure out best practices. We posted, you know, a huge sign about, you know, behavior guidelines in the cafe. And I guess we'll see when things get back to normal, how that goes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions before we move on? All right. Next on the agenda is the financial report. So, I'll give it over to you, Mike.
Okay, so, the budget before you is from July to March, so we're three quarters of the year through. And if I could just take to the top part, which is the personnel services part of the budget, the revised budget is $2,187,000 plus dollars, and expenses are $1,595,000 plus dollars. And we currently have a balance of $592,000, and we have spent approximately 73% of the total budget for personnel. Regarding library expenses, the revised budget, we've spent $928,000, or call it $929,000. And the balance that we have is $108,784, and we've spent 88% of that budget. A question that I had for you, Leon, is, is the staff still getting paid? And if they are, up until what date might they be paid by the town?
All of the permanent staff are being paid, and they'll be paid, you know, throughout the fiscal year. That's not going to end. The people who aren't getting paid are the pages and other people who are per diem type people. So, and that's by order of the town. So, the permanent staff is definitely getting their full pay. I can see that we will likely have a larger surplus this year, just because we can't have those people coming into work at this point. So, we should be looking at, at, for the end of the year.
And what happens to those surplus monies?
They would go back to the town's bottom line.
And do you have any, I'll call it outstanding, either full or part-time positions to be filled?
I know we're fully staffed at the moment.
Anyone else have any questions?
Leon, I'm just wondering if there are any sort of hidden costs to this crisis that might not be appearing on the budget yet, but we'll, you know, see in a month or two to come.
Well, I think that we're closely monitoring what we're spending on digital materials. And not at this meeting, but perhaps at the May meeting, we want to think about using some LigMed funds for additional digital materials or possibly physical materials if we're going to be back in the building. So, we have divided up the rest of the book budget for the year, spending basically half and half of what we have left on physical and half on digital. But if it's going to last, you know, if the closure lasts longer than May 4th, et cetera, we may want to look at some additional funding for that. Other than that, I'm, we're not really seeing that. I've got some decisions to make about how we spend the, the rest of the tech budget, for example. But those, those things are in process right now.
Thank you.
Okay, just want to move on. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to read the breakout of the third quarter budget breakdown regarding all of the expenses that we've had. Moving on to the FY '20 funds and grants, I think I did see, Leon, that you received something from LigMed.
Yes, we got our first payment of the year, $32,000 in change, so that, that will show up on the next funds and grants sheet. The additional funding, we had in special gifts, if you look at the deposits here to date, $53,000, $50,000 of that was for the sale of the maps.
Okay. We missed most of that, Leon, I think.
Okay. The LigMed funds have not shown up in the sheet yet. They, they will show up on next month's funds and grants. And the large deposit to special gifts was the sale of the maps.
Are there any questions regarding the the grants? Any questions regarding the Burke Fund?
Can I just go back a step? I just wanted to see.
Losing you.
Yeah, I'm losing Leanne also.
Budget breakdown.
Leanne, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I just was wondering about the, the increased amounts that, that were spent on the electronic materials. Does that show up in this month's budget at all? Is it under the book expenditures or?
Yeah, yeah. If you look at the, at the budget sheet, it does, it's not, it's hard to tell within the book budget because it's all one lump sum. So, basically, what you can see under books is that we have $62,000 encumbered and $31,000 still left to spend. But that's, you know, that's going to be all becoming cumbered soon.
Okay.
But it, it doesn't get broken out in the, in the line item budget for the town.
Okay. But you said that for now, it's like about half and half, right?
Yeah, that's how we divide it up for the, for the rest of the year.
Okay.
Well, we'll keep an eye on that and then report back next meeting whether we need, uh, need to use some LigMed funds or if we're all set.
Okay.
And Caitlin, could I ask you to, to inform us about the Hatch financials?
Yeah, there's, I mean, what's, what's on the spreadsheet is accurate. Obviously, we're not going to be spending a lot for the next, until we open again. A lot of our budget comes on just the materials and programming. So, when we're not doing that, we're not really spending that money. So, we will be placing an order for supplies to get us through the end of the year or into next year, which, which works. And we just found out also that the Community Foundation isn't going to be doing their spring round of grants as they usually do because of the COVID response. So, that might affect us next year. So, if we have a little bit of buffer of supplies, that will be good for us. So, yeah, I mean, we're, we're fine right now. Not being open means we're not spending money, so.
Leon, not knowing, well, I, I think May 4th is a date that, that maybe the governor was hopeful that we could go back to regular business. But should that not happen, are there, are there any outstanding situations financially that we should be either aware of or that might need action within the next, say, 30 days or so?
Um, at this point, none that I can pinpoint. I guess what I'm mostly worried about is our FY '21 budget. As far as I know, the town manager will be doing his budget presentation the fourth Tuesday of this month. So, we have that to look forward to. And as you know, the severe, you know, drop in revenue going to the state, to the city, could definitely have an impact on our FY '21 budget. So, that's foremost in my mind right now, that, that worry.
Are you concerned that, that you, that the library could receive lesser funds in the next fiscal year than this year, which could have an impact on staff and programs?
I, anything's possible at this point. You know, we don't really know the full impact yet.
Any other questions regarding the finance? Anyone like to entertain?
Make a motion that we approve the finance, financials. This is Shep.
Thank you, Shep. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to do the roll call. Mike Handlin?
Yes.
Emily Izzo?
Yes.
Teddy Kokoros?
Yes.
Daniel Pritchett?
Aye.
Shep Ferguson. Shep Ferguson. Yes, and I am under the I column, so that motion is approved to accept the financial report. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And bringing on the chair's report, I don't really have anything right now. I just want to, again, reiterate my thanks to the library staff and Leon and Caitlin for all their hard work this month. So, I will yield the floor to the library director to do her report.
Thank you. So, I just said, update on library services during the closure. As you know, Caitlin, Natasha, and I have been spending time in the building, taking care of all the returns, getting things, you know, checked in and making sure all the emails and phone calls are returned. We're making sure we get all the bills paid, et cetera. So, those are the things that we're doing in the building. We've got limited custodial operations going on. We started letting a few people back in the building occasionally to do a little bit of work. For example, the person who does processing, we started having him come in a few hours a week just to get some of the backlog taken care of. And the rest of the staff is working remotely on certain things like documentation for their departments, which, you know, always goes by the wayside when you're doing customer service, for example. They're also, as you know, working on a lot of virtual programming. And I think that as of tonight, all of those programs are listed on our events calendar on the website. So, please do check that out. Got a lot of things going on. I think every day, every weekday, starting on Thursday this month, we have something, whether it's for children, teens, or adults. And I'm excited about what we're going to be able to offer. So, please check those out. We do have a e-newsletter that'll be coming out on Monday, and I will be passing that along, and that has, has, you know, all of, all of our offerings will be on that. I don't, I just want to say that I, some of you probably knew David Breakstone, and he passed away recently, so we were sad to hear that. His wife did call us and say that donations in his memory would be going to the library. So, we will be certainly seeing some, some funds coming in, in David's memory. So, we're, we're grateful for that. Otherwise, like I said, we are buying digital materials. We're bringing physical materials. We'll be all ready for when, you know, the staff and public comes back to the building. And we're, you know, obviously, like the rest of you, hoping that will, will be a successful thing and, and happen sooner rather than later. I just want to move on then to the next item, and, which is trustee help needed. And I'm going to ask Caitlin to talk to you a little bit about that.
So, you know, in the, we've been trying really to, to get out the word about what we're offering to people. You know, that it's always been a struggle for us, you know, in different ways to, to reach people. So, there are a few things that we could do, or that you could do to help us get the word out. One thing we're doing is we've moved to doing weekly e-newsletters, at least for during the closure. So, when you get those e-newsletters, if you could forward them to your contacts and encourage your friends and family and groups that you're part of to, to sign up for that e-newsletter, that would be one really good way for people to be informed. When we reopen, we'll resume to doing it once a month, so that we're not spamming people. But I think right now that this is the best way, because people aren't coming into the library and seeing and talking. So, we're trying to make sure we're getting as many points as we can. We have beefed up our advertising on Facebook. I shouldn't say beefed up, like, we don't usually do paid ads. So, we are paying for some ads on Facebook to get a bigger reach, and that is, that's working. We're getting a lot more likes and more engagement. We've just had 50 new likes in the past week, which is rare for us. We're usually only a handful of people every month or every week. So, if you are on Facebook, if you could make sure that you like the library and then share our posts when we do have stuff out there to your, to your page and any other groups that you're part of. Teddy, thank you. I know you're doing it all the time, and it's super helpful. And I appreciate that. We are on Instagram as well. That's a little bit different to share. But if you are on Instagram and you have friends that are on Instagram, let them know that we are there, and they can, they can connect with us that way. If you're, if you're involved in any other groups in town, please make sure that you're sharing stuff when you hear it, and make sure you're familiar with what we're doing while we're, while we're closed. Because, you know, it's, it's not just about getting the word out. It's that we want to make sure that we're reaching people. And, you know, even, even if we reach people, we know at this point it's limited. It means we're reaching people that have internet, that have devices. And it's not everyone, but we want to reach as many people as we can. So, if you can do those things, that would be super helpful for us.
I think that's it for me, Leanne.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, sorry. Did you have a comment, Shep? Go ahead.
Yeah, and I should have probably asked these questions when we were doing the budget, because I noticed a couple of things. And the first question is, what are you, are you, do you have numbers on what kind of response we're getting electronically now during, during this period? Are you seeing numbers going up for eBooks or all the other services?
We are seeing those definitely go up. Caitlin, you seen more numbers than I have?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't looked this week, but we can get those numbers, and we have access to them, so we can give them to you. I can't give you a good number right now.
Okay, I have just a couple of other questions. Yeah, does, does this create more stress on the tech budget?
No, less stress on the tech budget at this moment.
All right. Then another question, on the Majestic Theater project, since nobody's going to the movies these days, are we paying to advertise there?
No, not yet. They, they have, they've agreed that, you know, we're not going to start that until they're back up and running. So, we'll still go forward with it, but not until, you know, the movie theater's reopened. We haven't paid any money yet.
Okay.
Other than the deposit.
Okay. And then, actually, this is appropriate. What are we using SurveyMonkey for?
SurveyMonkey was for the, the survey for the strategic plan.
Got it. And then, this is just from my own ignorance, what are barn babies?
Natasha's favorite program.
Used to come to my preschool.
Uh, it's, uh, this, uh, this group brings farm animals to the library and has a little petting zoo for the children.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, for Leon or Caitlin? I had one question about the, the online library cards. Is there tracking of that? And if so, is it by town and? And will there be a way to, like, stay engaged with those people after this crisis?
Yeah, there is tracking and we can give you those numbers as well. But they, I mean, it gets coded eventually. So, like, it'll be the Watertown people are with the Watertown, is with Watertown Library. It's not perfect by any means, but then we can get basic numbers.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we move on? Okay, seeing that, I'm going to go on to old business, which I don't see any. Does anybody have any old business?
I.
On the agenda?
I have another question. There was, we were going to do a letter to the city about the police station, right?
Yes, I, go ahead.
What happened with that?
I talked to Leon about this earlier. It kind of, you know, I was going to edit the letter and bring it to our meeting in March with the Strategic Planning Committee. But considering everything that's going on with, in town right now, I thought it would be best to wait because I don't think anybody in the town manager or the counselor are going to be, you know, paying much attention at this point. So, I'd like to just table that until this crisis is kind of,
Okay.
we're, we're out of the, the worst of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, I think the next thing is new business and the discussion of our strategic planning work. Caitlin or Leon, do you want to give us sort of an update or what we're going to do about the Strategic Planning Committee?
Yeah, so we wanted to get your opinion about what we should do. Obviously, we can't be meeting. It's, we could do a Zoom meeting. It, it's a lot of people, though, and maybe limited results from that as far as, you know, getting people's ideas and really concentrating on what we should be doing. You know, Caitlin and I have been talking. And if the Board of Library Commissioners would, you know, back us up on delaying it, we would certainly like to, to go that way so that once we get back into a more normal situation, it would be easier to really figure out what we need to do because it probably will be a new normal, but we don't know what that is yet. And so, we were wanting to hear what you guys thought about that.
Are we under any deadline in normal circumstances?
Normal circumstances, yes.
And what was, what is deadline?
Said December, Caitlin?
October.
October.
And has there been, there has not been any guidance yet from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners about what? I mean, I assume that some people are on their strategic planning year now and others aren't. But there hasn't been any guidance to the, to the libraries that are doing strategic planning this year. No.
No, they sent, they did send out guidance on a number of things, but that wasn't included.
Okay. I, I mean, I tend to agree that it would be hard to, to, to do a strategic plan right now with things so up in the air and not knowing how things, when things will get back to normal. I, I tend to agree that it would be hard to, to hold a Zoom meeting with as many people as come to the Strategic Planning Committee meetings. And so, our time might be better spent later this year. Is there, would that be something that, that we could check in with the Board of Library Commissioners and, and just get their take on it?
Sure, absolutely.
Is there a realistic possibility that we could double the frequency of those meetings once we get back to the possibility of meeting face to face? So, doing them twice a month rather than once a month? Catch up?
If people, if everyone on the committee is open to that, absolutely.
I've been spending, I've spent the last month facilitating large conversations on Zoom. So, or at least supporting the facilitation of large conversations on Zoom. And I have seen it succeed in instances where there's a very sort of concentrated purpose, free-form conversations of the type we've been having, which we're kind of brainstorming and asking questions. Definitely, I've got it out of hand with larger. But I'm wondering if there are any specific, you know, you know, outcomes that we could review documentation in advance, meet, discuss something very specific, try and make a decision on it. You know, anything like that. We could sort of discreet objectives that we could approach through Zoom. You know, we wouldn't be moving much more slowly. But we could still at least make a little progress in this digital space. But I, you know, I'm actually not totally sure sort of what the process looks like moving forward, so.
Caitlin, you want to talk about that?
Um, I think, yeah, I mean, I think we could, we definitely could probably do that. My, my bigger concern, more than the logistics, is just that we don't know what we're walking into and that I don't want to plan for something under, like, using our, I mean, the survey details and data are all important, but we have no idea when our budget's going to be for next year yet at this point. You know, things could be drastically different. So, I think that's kind of my hesitance to, to move forward with it. And also, just the, the level of, of the quality of what we can do at this point. I'm a little, like, I want it to be a good plan and I'm a little concerned that it'll be difficult to really throw ourselves into it in the, in the, the way that we want to. So, my opinion would be that if the, if the MBLC is kind enough to, to extend it to us, then it might be a better plan in the end if we can, if we can extend it a little bit. But maybe this is a way we could do some focus groups or something on certain things, like, like you said, like on a specific topic of things that we know that are going to come up, regardless of what happens, you know, with budgets and stuff. So, I think it's something worth exploring, but I, I think that I would still probably want to see if we can extend the timeframe.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
So, I guess what we'll do is reach out to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners and see if they will offer an extension. And then bring this up again at our next meeting and see where we are then. And go forward then. Do we need to vote or anything on, on postponing for now the meeting that we, we, we would have had this month, like, the April 18th meeting? Or can we just wait and take action next month when we know?
I think we can wait till next month unless someone feels really strongly that they want to take some other sort of action.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts on this?
If I may, May 4th is a Monday and we normally would meet on Tuesday, May 5th. And if there's any way to let everyone know maybe what, somewhat the circumstances might be a week ahead of time so that if, if need be, we do another video conference or if we are permitted to have a regular meeting.
Yeah, we'll get that information as soon as we have it to you.
Thank you.
So, I should follow up with the Strategic Planning Committee and say that April's meeting is canceled and we'll follow up with the trajectory when we have more information.
Yes, that's, I, I think that's the best course right now. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any requests for information tonight? I'm going to go through the trustees. Mike, do you have any?
No, all set.
All set? Emily?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Teddy?
No, all set.
Okay, Daniel?
Uh, no, I just want to take the opportunity to echo Leanne and say how great a job you guys are doing. I know it's exceedingly difficult circumstances. And I've heard from lots of people in the community about the digital programming and the communication, really positive things. So, really great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Shep, any?
No.
All right, and I don't have any requests right now. But again, thanks for all that you're doing at the library. And thanks, everybody, for, for attending our virtual meeting tonight. So, the date of our next meeting, I think, is the 5th of May, which is Tuesday. And so, you again, on May 5th. And if there's nothing else, I'm going to call for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, any second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Mike?
Hi.
Emily?
Emily? Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Daniel?
Hi.
Shep?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So, thanks, everybody. Meeting's adjourned.